In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, PL 1975, C 231 S 1, amended 2006, C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice, a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting, the Asbury, to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 8th, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 8th, 2021. The mission of the Asbury Park School System is for, the Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
Chavez, Anderson, Ms. Breach, Ms. Cook, Mr. Grillo, Mr. Lotaraca, Mr. Remmy, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Lozinski, Ms. Etienne.
Please stand for the flag. We have a presentation today?
Yes, Madam President, we have several presentations this evening. As you know, we've started with recognizing our students, but this evening, we'll also be recognizing our Educators of the Year and our Support Staff Members of the Year for our four schools. So those in attendance, let's give them a round of applause real quick.[131.66][131.66](Applause). Then we will follow up with two presentations, one which you see up on the screen, our WEATA Access Score, followed by a presentation from our staff from the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. So I would like to start with the principals, two of our principals are not here this evening. However, I believe we have a staff member from their school here to represent them. So I would like to start with the elementary school students. Have Mr. Medina and Dr. Jackson come up, as well as I believe Ms. Amanda Napolitani will be representing Bradley Elementary. And we have someone from the high school. Mr. Provenza, would you mind standing in for the high school?
(Inaudible).
Oh, Ms. Kropowski, excuse me, sorry, Ms. Kropowski. Okay, thank you.
Nadir, please, ooh, excuse me, Nadir, please come up, Nadir Mohammed Purvis.[223.62][223.62](Applause). So really quickly, I'd like to discuss, or rather share with you that.
Nadir is an excellent student. He is part of our AE program, straight A's. He is a student that we should all aspire to be like. His work ethic, his drive, his dedication, and he's also a pretty popular kid in this school. So Nadir, on behalf of MLK, I'd like to present you with this slight little gift and congratulate you on a great accomplishment. Thank you, Nadir.[258.14][258.14](Applause). Anyway, come here, buddy.
(Inaudible). Oh, Mr., uh, you take a picture, come on, stand right next to me.
Here, come on, buddy, let's come this way. Come on, Dad. Get everybody.
You want to stand right next to him?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Jackson, the Principal of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. On behalf of the Thurgood community, we are so delighted to announce our Student of the Month for this month, Mr. Johann Lopez Ortiz. Please come up, Johann.[334.81][334.81](Applause).
You're gonna let him hold it, you're gonna face the camera?[364.12][364.12](Applause).
And Johann, on behalf of our school, we have a bookbag filled with all of your favorite things inside. We are so proud of you. Congratulations, sweetheart, and congratulations, family.[387.02][387.02](Applause).
Good evening, everyone. Take it out.
Ms. Jackson, just hold it farther away from your, yeah.
Like that?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. So, good evening, everyone. I would like, I'm, it is an honor and privilege to introduce Xavieran Baradesco.[426.12][426.12](Applause). Let me just tell you a little bit about Xavieran. Xavieran is a nine-year-old student at Bradley Elementary School. He is the youngest twin of six siblings, all boys from 22 to nine. Xavieran is a very hard worker and is improving in his reading every day. He is a model student and a true pleasure to have in class. With hard work and his love for learning, Xavieran will achieve all his goals. Congratulations, Xavieran Baradesco.[456.41][456.41](Applause). And we just want to say, we know we are honoring Xavieran, but we want to say thank you to mom, because, because of you, you brought him to us, and you're, so we want to say thank you. We believe in giving our parents their flowers.[478.87][478.87](Applause).
Take a picture, take a picture.
Quick picture, quick picture.
Ready? One, two, three.
Good evening. Mrs. Baumgartner sends her apologies and asks myself and Mr. Provenza to stand in and to honor Ms. Jaded Velazquez as the High School Student of the Month.[526.12][526.12](Applause). Jaded is an enthusiastic and hard-working student who strives to do the best that she can at any task. She is extremely intelligent, determined, and does not accept failure in any task she encounters. She is the first to debate a topic and be number one. She has a beautiful singing voice and really loves to take a leadership role in the middle school. She is creative, talented, kind, and diligent. She always comes to class with a positive attitude and a willingness to help others. She is committed to success and always puts forth her best effort.[567.79][567.79](Applause).
Jaded is also a member of our middle school cheer squad who quickly stood out and took on a leadership role on the team. Jaded really liked how I teach, how I taught this year and saw that I was a volleyball coach as well with Ms. Millen, and she just wanted to be a part of that culture that I've created. And she also came to our practices and volunteered and joined and was actually pretty good at libero, which is an awesome, like, you know, way to start the future, right, for our volleyball team. So I, Jaded truly deserves this award, and I'm very proud of her, and for the 2021 Student of the Month Award for Jaded Velazquez.[619.12][619.12](Applause).
Thank you.[628.41][628.41](Applause).
I probably need a microphone, I'm pretty loud, I'm gonna use my cafeteria voice. Good evening again. I'm Dr. Adams, the Superintendent here. Each year, we, everyone in the state of New Jersey recognizes an Educator of the Year and a Support Staff Person of the Year for each school, and then they are recognized by the county in which they live. We at Asbury Park are taking an opportunity to recognize our Educators of the Year and our Support Service Staff Member of the Year prior to the Monmouth County Awards Program, which will take place in the spring. We wanted to do that now to show our appreciation for the hard work and the dedication that these staff members have done this year, coming in off of a year where we were off for 18 months. So their accomplishments are not lost on the hard work and this trying time. We have a lot of hard-working, dedicated staff, and those members that are being recognized today are just a small, small percentage of those who work here and try every day on behalf of our students. And so with that being said, I'm gonna call up Ms. Jackson Byers. She will call up her Educator of the Year and her Support Staff Person of the Year. We have certificates as well as a Medal of Appreciation.[741.82][741.82](Clerk) Sure.
Good evening, everyone. I am going to be brief. Our Bradley Elementary School Teacher of the Year has actually been an educator in the Asbury Park School District for 20 years. She has worked her way up as a student teacher, substitute teacher, paraprofessional, special education teacher, second-grade teacher, and our Bradley Elementary School Teacher of the Year has been married 12 years with a daughter, a son, a grandson. She is a member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated and was very instrumental in making sure half of Bradley was vaccinated and extended staff. She was our true honorary Nurse Betty during the height of the pandemic. It is a pleasure to congratulate Mrs. Shelley Sanders, our Bradley Elementary School Teacher of the Year 2021-2022.[800.12][800.12](Applause). Our Educational Services Professional of the Year is small in stature but has a big heart. She has been a preschool paraprofessional for 35 years. She earned her Associate's Degree from Brookdale in Early Childhood Education. She has been married 39 years with two sons, two granddaughters, and she loves baby, her chihuahua. Our Educational Services Professional of the Year is a true survivor. She beat cancer and continues to fight every day to bring awareness. It is a great honor that I introduce to some and present to others Mrs. Anna Santiago Gonzalez, our Bradley Elementary School 2021-2022 through Education
Ms. Jack, Dr. Jackson?
Good evening again, everyone. I am so delighted to introduce our Teacher of the Year and Educational Support Staff of the Year for the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. First, with our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Tiara Hamilton is kind, she is nurturing, she is dedicated, she is committed, and she is an overall exemplary model of what a teacher should be. As a kindergarten teacher at Thurgood, she is always there to support her colleagues, to take on district initiatives, and to showcase her loving nature for her students day in and day out. Parents refer to her as a true support. Her colleagues refer to her as a friend and someone they can rely on for help, and as her principal, I am so honored to have her, give her this award tonight. Congratulations, Ms. Hamilton.[941.81][941.81](Applause). Our Educational Support Staff of the Year is none other than Ms. Tiffany Andrews, our reading coach.[964.62][964.62](Applause). Ms. Andrews is a true beacon of light on the SSTMES. She is always there in her support staff for her colleagues to help, be a reliable source. She is always willing to take on a task whenever there is something needed for the building, the students, the staff, the community, or even myself as a new principal and before as her direct supervisor. She was there. As a committed after-school site coordinator for Thurgood, she has built a fantastic relationship with all of our families, and she is always there striving to make Thurgood the best school it can be. Ms. Andrews, so well deserved. Congratulations.[1004.12][1004.12](Applause).
And hi again, my name is Perry Medina, Principal of Marluca King Jr. Elementary School. Unfortunately, my Teacher of the Year and support, Educational Support Staff Member of the Year didn't make it, however, I will accept their award on their behalf. Ms. Snyder, our Teacher of the Year, actually started out as a paraprofessional. She made her way up the ranks to teacher and very quickly became a teacher leader. She is someone we can count on, excuse me, day in and day out, and someone her colleagues can count on for guidance, support, and really just overall the fact that she's there for them. Our Educational Support Staff Member of the Year, Ms. Lizera Boston, which I'm sure some of you know, has been in the district quite a while. She's a coach, she's an instructional paraprofessional, and someone I admire wholeheartedly. So on behalf of those two fine ladies, I
Good evening again. Ms. Baumgartner does extend her apologies for not being here. However, she asked me, Janice Kropowski, to stand in for her to recognize the High School Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Sabrina Grasso.[1110.41][1110.41](Applause).
A few words about Ms. Grasso. Ms. Grasso was a coach for a while, and, come on.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of working with her for about a year or so. She made the transition back to the classroom and did so without a blip, and has been providing solid math instruction for our secondary students. And so, Ms. Grasso, I know this is a well-deserved honor for you, and so on behalf of the secondary folks, particularly the math department, congratulations.[1150.58][1150.58](Applause).
And we also like to honor the Support Staff Member of the Year, Ms. Lenee Brown.[1164.12][1164.12](Applause).
So, Ms. Brown Foster was also a staff member of mine.
Yes.
Dedicated, hardworking, reliable. There's so many adjectives I could use to describe the effort that she puts forth with our students that none of them are an exaggeration. So again, we're gonna follow up with the last two presentations. There's some feedback. We're gonna start with our WEATA Access Scores.
Madam President, good evening. Good evening, Dr. Adams.
Excuse me, just, parents, if you want to part, I know you have the little ones. That
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Dr. Adams, good evening, Board Members. This is our annual, very quick, 30,000 feet above the ground, bird's-eye view of our WEATA Access District Test Scores. This exam is administered to all ESL students in grades K through 12 every year. The test is broken down into four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And in order for a student to test out of our English as a Second Language Program, the student must score a composite number of 4.5, and that is a New Jersey DOE guideline. So we administer the test in March, April, March and April, and we prepare the students based on their previous year's scores, as well as their benchmark scores and their classroom performance. And these are just some slides that correlate to the proficiency levels that the students must move through as they acquire English language skills. So this is a, our district census as of two days ago in terms of our English as a Second Language student population. Most of our students speak Spanish as their home language. We have 160 Spanish-speaking students who, upon registration, checked off on their registration form that Spanish is their primary language. We have 33 students who speak Haitian Creole and three Arabic-speaking students. And the second pie chart is where the students are located in terms of grade bands. So in grades K through 3, we have 47 ELL students, and in grades 4 through 6, we have 79, and in 7 through 12, we have 93 students. So we have transferred all of our WEATA Access data into our LinkIt platform, which makes access very easy for teachers, and the language is exactly the same as if they were looking at the written report, the printed report from the WEATA organization. So this is a district-wide K through 12 student scores in listening. This is our best domain, tested domain last academic year. Here's our reading scores. You'll see, we do have some reaching, the bridging and reaching, which is toward the test-out phase. And then on writing, as well as speaking, we are lagging a little, a little lower in those areas. So this year, each student has an individualized learning plan if they are an ESL student. There are two academic goals geared toward data analysis and identification of weaknesses from last year's test scores, and strategic instruction is being provided. And this is just a picture of a data wall from our 7th and 8th grade ESL room, and the students, their goals and expectations are visible for them every day, working toward scoring higher on that WEATA Access by one entire point this academic year. So that's, rounds out the quick WEATA presentation. If you have any questions, yes?
I have two questions. When you say 4.5, can I assume that's out of five?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
When you say, they have to score 4.5, that's out of five.
It's actually out of six.
It's out of six. Okay. What do they, what do they base that on? Like, what's the criteria?
The criteria is, there's a, a very specific breakdown, which is right here, and also on the bottom of the sample student, but I can send you a copy. There is a mathematical calculation in multiple different areas to reach that composite score, but I, I can send it to you if you would like.
Could you send it to the whole board?
Sure, I'll, I'll send it to Dr. Adams or Mr. Ruiz first thing in the morning.
And one other question. This, this scoring, is that, you said 8 through 12, 8th grade through 12th grade, that's it?
It's K through 12.
K through 12, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just had, I had one question. Was there any, any indication that some of, I know that some of the kids have been out of school, all of them, for quite a while during the pandemic time. Is there any indication that they did worse because of that, or they did about the same, or have there been?
Well, it's, it's really hard to measure WEATA scores year to year. However, they were a little lower last academic year than they have been in the past. So I can't, I can't say that scientifically, I can just say that based on casual observation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kropowski. We'll have our last presentation from Thurgood Marshall. This will be another short presentation, just on our academic programs offerings that is being utilized at Thurgood Marshall. The presenters today are Ms. Amanda Napolitani, our reading specialist, and our reading coach, Ms. Tiffany Andrews.
Good evening, Asbury Park Board of Education Superintendent Adams and Administration. I again am Dr. Lauren Jackson, the Principal of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, and tonight, Thurgood is going to be presenting to you on how we are beginning to set sail. And before I begin, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge three of our staff members that are in the audience, Ms. Meg Watkins, Ms. Regina Jagu, and Mr. Keith Turpin, who are of course a part of this building-wide initiative.[1702.58][1702.58](Applause). So our theme at Thurgood Marshall this year is nautical, everything, setting, setting sail, the ocean, the beach, tying into our community. So today, we are going to be talking about where we are going in the future, but before we do that, I would like to take a look back on the month-long journey that we've had between November and December during my transition into the building. So in that time, we as a team have collectively rewrote our building mission statement. We've reassembled our building instructional leadership team with teacher volunteers from each grade level. We have implemented behavior plans for individual students in both special education and general education settings, which we will get into. We have planned ideas for unused facilities within the building. We have published our first SS TMS nautical news. We have conducted a common safe three-hour emergency off-site evacuation, established routines for our instructional leadership walkthroughs with the administrative team and the staff in the building. We had the largest turnout, the mayor's words, not mine, in the history of Walk to School Day, had a 100% lesson submission rate from all staff in the building, and we successfully began to implement the district-wide Student of the Month initiative at the building level where all of our young scholars are honored monthly through different initiatives and rewards for their stellar behavior. And photos lends context to 1,000 more words, so here's just some quick photos to showcase the month-long journey before we before we begin to set sail. So, what exactly is SAIL? It is an acronym that stands for a collaborative, building-wide initiative that provides classroom staff, both in the classroom and out of the classroom, with the tools, support, and platforms to increase intentional implementation of instruction that is rooted in data.
Good evening. The acronym SAIL stands for Scaffolding to Advance Intentional Learning. And how did we start sailing? It was collective feedback from multiple sources. When Dr. Jackson first came in, she had a chat and chew where all the staff got together and were able to talk about where we are and where we'd like to head. There were suggestions from parents and families, input from them. We have weekly walkthroughs where Central Office comes through. And through that, there is, Dr. Jackson put in place a system where teachers get immediate feedback, somewhat global, and then specific to that teacher. We're using the Linkit data to help us with benchmarks, to see where the students are, using the standards to see where they're struggling, and then focus that intentional instruction on that standard. We also reviewed all of our instructional programs to make sure where we are, we're all together in the right place, and where we're going to move from there. Is that, okay. Driving question. How can we create a system that uses this feedback efficiently and effectively for students and teachers? Okay, so the pylons of SAIL. So, these are our pillars of what we're focusing on. Anchors away are our priority standards for ELA and math. We're spotlighting through incentive-based programs. The standard-based programs are hands-on deck, using STEM projects where the kids are creating. And we're charting a map of our journey that we're going on to using data folders, data walls, based off of our Linkit data and our HMH data. And our goal is to increase intentional implementation of data-driven instruction. Okay, so our scaffolding spotlight. AmeriCorps tutoring through Dr. Jackson and Ms. Hogan from AmeriCorps. They are planning to have a 3rd grade tutoring session where this person will be coming in four days a week and providing tutoring for the struggling 3rd grade students. It's also going to be in-class support, focusing on our core content areas, small group instruction, and intensive reading support, where she'll be working with me and Ms. Andrews on ELA and math, ensuring that she's focusing on our core programs and our intervention programs.
Intentional behavioral supports. We have, our sources are our parents, our teachers, our special services, including CST and Guidance Department. Our tiered behavior interventions are individualized student incentive charts with intentional rewards, student interests, individualized student anticipatory visuals and sensory breaks, recurring team meetings with family. A lot of these behavioral supports are things that are used in our special ed population, but we are moving them to, using them with our general ed population also. Here's some examples of our individualized student incentive charts, individualized student anticipatory visuals. Upcycling of our facilities. Currently, we have some rooms that are not being used. And so, we're looking to change them to sensory and therapy rooms, mindfulness and meditation spaces, grab-and-go resource center, which was an idea that one of our kindergarten teachers came up with. Teachers are hoarders. We all are. If you've ever been a teacher, we're hoarders. And so, in our closets, we have so many things that are not being used because of grade level changes or whatever the case may be. So, we want to have a room that teachers can go to, can grab and go, and use different resources that are not being used. Here is our boarding pass, and we're ready to set sail. Come join us.[966.34][966.34][applause]
Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms...
Yes, Mr. Lattaraca. I'm still trying to understand the Lincoln benchmarks a little bit. Do you identify those by doing, let's take 3rd grade standardized assessments in 3rd grade? Or you bring in the teachers who, based on the standards they're teaching, identify the weakness in a particular standard?
Sure. So, Linkit is a platform and a data warehouse that we use in district. And what the platform does is it takes the learning standards from each grade, really K to 12, and we do it three to four times a year, depending on grade level or specific situation. And it bridges the skills that the standards are rooted in, that replicates the most commonly used standards on the actual standardized assessments that grades 3 through 12 use. So, it's internal data for us, then, at the building level, at the departmental levels, and at the district level, to take grade level data, classroom data. It even drills it down to individual student and connects it directly to the New Jersey Student Learning Standard so we can identify deficiencies with student learning, or also, on the flip side, identify really significant areas of success for students, and then accommodate and modify the learning and instruction for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you to the other staff from Thurgood Marshall that came to support your colleagues as well. Thank you very much.[1072.38][1072.38][applause] That concludes my report.
Madam President?
Seven board members want to make a presentation. Seven board members want to make a presentation. I know where he's going. Where'd he go, outside?
And she goes crying again.
First, I'd like Angela Abes Anderson to come up.[1173.54][1173.54][applause] Since Angela's last board meeting's tonight, and she won't be serving anymore, we wanted to recognize your years of service. And the Board of Education proudly presents this award to Angela Abes Anderson, Board Member from 2011 to 2021, in recognition of your dedication and selfless contribution to the Asbury Park School District.[1209.22][1209.22][applause]
It's all right to cry. That's right.
Oh, and we have one more board member, Sheila Antien. This also is Sheila's last board meeting. She won't be with us anymore. But, the Asbury Park Board of Education proudly presents this award to Sheila Antien, Board Member from 2015, 2021, in recognition of your dedication and selfless contribution to the Asbury Park School District.[1272.14][1272.14][applause] Now, since this, Ms. Ricks, if you take a picture of us, since this is the last time the nine of us will be together.
Did it look like I was just running away?
Yeah.
Well, I got my flowers and my plaque. All right, at this point, we're going to be opening up the floor for public participation. Thank you so much, guys. I did not expect this. Thank you. Me too. Can I tell you guys something? When I first walked in here, I looked and I started dropping tears. And I told Karita, I said, "This is my last night." And I had to keep getting up, going into the bathroom, because I kept crying.[1376.94][1376.94][laughter] So, I just, I want to say that I just, I love all of you. My rod and daughter, right there. That's Jeff. You know, you've always been there for me. And you and Carol, you and I, we go back. Adam, Dr. Adams, Ivy, and my partner over there, my traveling partner, always been there for me. And we've had our ups and downs, Barbara, but you've always been there. And I thank you for that. Connie, I thank you. Dominic, Joe, you know you my guy. And then there's Kenneth. And then our two newbies here. Yeah, I think I'm going to stay.[1423.22][1423.22][laughter] But we have our beautiful Karita and Remy. And I'm just so thank you. And John Caplow. So, thank you all. I just appreciate it. And Sheila, you know you've been my bestie. So, I thank you so much.
Thank you.[1442.02][1442.02][applause] I'm not going to take too much, but I know we've come a long way since we were running. I'm running and she's running. And I'm thirsty and she has orange juice. And she's like, "Do you want some of this orange juice?" I'm like, "No, you're an enemy. I'm not drinking any of your orange juice."[1458.54][1458.54][laughter] I was so thirsty.[1461.94][1461.94][laughter] But definitely, this has been a privilege. I have more to say. I'll probably say it in our last little half a day. But thank you. It has been a privilege. And I don't think I would feel secure in stepping down if I didn't know that, you know, we had people on this board that can handle it all. Thank you so much.[1488.94][1488.94][applause]
We're working on the foundation that you two built. So, congratulations on making such an impact on the kids and all of us here. So, thank you both so much.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to be opening up the floor for public participation. I don't know if I said that already. I don't see anyone running towards the mic. Do we have any emails, any phone calls, Mr. Hastings? Okay, we're going to be closing public participation. We're closing it now, closed. Madam State Monitor, do you have a presentation or report tonight?
I just wish everybody a happy holiday.
Thank you. You guys heard that, happy holidays. Mr. Hastings, can we have an acceptance of the minutes for the last...
Yes, Madam President. Could I have a motion for item 9, A through C, on A1 and A2?
I'll move it. Second.
Questions or comments? Ms. Zuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Antien?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson? Acceptance of minutes. Ms. Breach? Ms. Cook? Mr. Grillo? Mr. Lattaraca? Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. At this time, Dr. Adams, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Would you please grant me a consent agenda for all items on B1 through B5?
I'll move it.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay.
Ms. Zuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach? Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Cook? Mr. Grillo? Mr. Lattaraca? Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Antien?
Yes, I'm abstaining. B1, item C.
All items carry.
Welcome aboard, Ms. Lee Benson, I mean, Ms. Leanne Benson, who's sitting in the back, our new curriculum instruction early childhood supervisor.
Mr. Hastings, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Could I have a motion for all items, C1, number 1, to C4, number 2?
Move it. Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Breach? Ms. Zuzinski?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Antien?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Okay, at this point, I would like to ask for a motion to close...
I wanted to know if I could say something.
Yes, Ms.
To the Sadeco gentlemen, I want to thank you for the wonderful meal. And it was delicious. We truly appreciate you and wish you a very Merry Christmas. You're welcome.[1721.94][1721.94][applause]
Yeah, that salmon was rocking.[1726.02][1726.02][laughter]
May I say one more thing? Okay. And we're welcoming you in a couple of weeks, Mrs. Ricks. And I know that Sheila and I, we're leaving, but we know that with all of you and you and the new addition, you're going to be rocking right here with us. And so, we look forward to your service. So, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Fifth.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.